Opening for a special meeting on budget hearing, time is five thirty-three. And we'll go ahead and open up, and this is for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Well, that as a preventer stick, my guess is I would next to data.
Okay.
Right. Getting put on it. All right, so look at the four hundred and fifty budget hearing. I'll be here before, but um kind of a quick headline slide for everybody that um. We base our budget on enrollment of twenty-one ninety-four. Uh, we have calculated crossroads enrollment decreasing due to the sunsetted Lakeview Bailey Agreement. They go down a little bit this year and then a little more next year. And um, we have the budget for a small kindergarten class of one forty-five. But based on birth rates, we are. Plannings gently planning for a possibility of it being around a hundred and eighty plus eight. Um, if if our capture rate comes through, and then as we talked about in uh demographic report. This is kind of a trigger year for us to see. It go one of two directions with our enrollment, it could start getting very high if the kindergarten. Capture rates um hold steady, or it could just be a little high. Um, but we're expecting large kindergarten classes for the foreseeable future. We're budgeting a year-end fund balance of three point three million dollars. Um, this grows our fund balance by one point one with any fund balance of at least a board requirement of seven percent. And it's actually seven point three percent. Um, kind of a something I'm probably going to highlight a number of times today and um future board meetings. That uh because the high school has been paid off now, that was the biggest piece of our bond levy that we have. So we are currently collecting four point eight million dollars um to pay our all of our debt services obligation for our bonds. That's going to go down to five hundred thousand dollars starting in the twenty twenty-six calendar tax year. So it was a forty-one percent decrease in overall tax rates for Granite Falls. Um, special education costs can do increase and they increase in the budget. But um the change in the funding formula, which with the no cap and the increased multipliers. Lowering of the safety net threshold and the ability to still get safe to net. Will cut, it goes a long way towards nearly a hundred percent funding of special ed. Um, so thank you to the legislature for that. Um, IPD for this year is two and a half percent. This drives salary increases as well as revenue increases from the state, but the revenue increases will always be less than the salary increases due to the state staffing formulas. We are, the formulas don't generate enough staffing to actually run a school like we always talk about. And the funding formula for how much you have to pay a staff member is nowhere near what any school district pays their staff members. There's two kind of shortfalls there, and the revenue they give us increases by IPD. When we pass IPD onto our staff, there's something, there's usually a growing gap, but it's funded versus not funded. Um, continues to be some risk around federal funding. Uh, federal grants are at varying degrees of risk, and our free meals for kids, which is the most painful, is at risk. Because most of that comes from federal funding. Um, also Washington State revenue remains at risk for the foreseeable future. Um, K twelve education is somewhat protected, but we've been seeing each revenue forecast come in. Increasingly lower than what was projected. Um, so things, things that aren't so protected under basic education, state grabs. Um, transportation, things like that could be at risk if the state starts making uh some deeper budget cuts. Um, real quick overview of the fund balance, um kind of shows the seven point three percent any fund balances here, shows our revenues, our expenditures. Um, kind of has a history, there's a history of our fund balance, so um. Had a couple of dips, but we've been steadily increasing for the last three years. Uh, we have a forecasted year-end fund balance of about two point two million dollars. And so that's what we're basing next year's budget on is our forecasted um any fund balance. The second little graph there is a trend of uh per by percentage of our fund balances, and it also has stairs stepped up quite nicely over the last couple of years. Um, and then a whole table showing our history of fund balance over the years. Um, breakdown of our enrollment, again, I I think the thing to really point out is the decline in crossroads enrollment. There will be some kids from the high school to transfer over to crossroads. There, but they'll, they'll still be probably, you know, thirty-five or so Lake Stevens kids there for one more year. Um, but declining crossroads enrollment due to the sun setting of the Lake Stevens Agreement. And then a kindergarten class of one forty-five, but. We're tracking it every day, we've got eight pending enrollments in our in the system right now. It could be as high as one eighty, one eighty-five, so we're, we've had some really discussions about what do we do if that happens? But we need to see the bottom points of the eyes before we kind of react to it. Um. One thing interesting from our demographic report is that we do a really good job of, if a kid is a first grader this year. They generally end up a second grader next year, we have very little roll-off of that. We almost, in in fact, we retain a hundred and two percent of our kids on average from grade to grade. So that is kind of a nice thing that once, once kids are in our system, they tend to stay and move forward each grade. Um, so there's a little bit of a enrollment trend. The graph is a little, it looks, it looks dramatic, but really the range is two thousand and fifty to twenty-two fifty. So it's, it's really, especially the last three years, fairly flat, you know, the graph looks more dramatic than it is. Um, our revenue, and this is where our revenue comes from. Um, just a kind of a call out, a seven point four percent of our revenue is federal, which is the riskiest portion of our revenue. Little pie chart of where our revenue comes from, the bulk is from the state, almost uh. That seventy-nine percent of our total revenue just comes from the state, we get ten percent from our levy, ten point six percent from our levy. We get um. Two, three point three percent from other entities like Snowish County for paying for E cap and our SSAs. And some other um revenue for other programs that were passed through other agencies to us. Um, and this is kind of percentages. Pretty consistent over the years. And the kind of the follow-up slide is that seven point four percent of our revenue does come from the federal and. In today's political climate, most federal revenue for most states is at risk. Um, kind of a comparison of our general fund expenditures, and then a call out of a couple of specific programs that we always like to talk about. Um, the general fund expenditures, obviously enrollment has turned up a little bit. Inflation has happened, so our expenditures have trended upward over the years. But um, we have done a really good job of balancing uh staffing to where the enrollment is in our district. And matching enrollment fluctuations over the last few years. And so our, really the primary reason for our growth of um fund balance. Has been us really trying to hone down on balancing enrollment and staffing.
Marshall, I have a question that if I'm interpreting it correctly, I think is very important whenever. We talk about the importance of a fund balance and unforeseen circumstances. So actually, if you go back one slide. Federal being seven point four percent, three point four million dollar, almost two point five million dollars. If federal funding gets cut, like hypothetically, if it got cut at the beginning of the twenty-four, twenty-five year, we would technically be in the red right now.
Correct.
So I, again, the importance of a fund balance, like I I just want to make it very clear, these numbers are large, it's because school districts are expensive. Um, but if we, you know, in in looking at reason why having a fund balance, it's not just, it's not a rainy day fund, it is a. Oh, my goodness, the Fed just cut our, you know, they're, they're no longer funding anything. And even with that, we'd still be in the red. A lot of people would be in the red, but we, we'd be in the red too, so I just want to make sure that that's pointed out and very obvious that that's even, that's a very. Uh, acute reason, it's not just death by, this is not death by a thousand paper cuts, it could just be ripped away and now we're suddenly in the red.
And I guess I I would add to that, that the federal funding isn't bright shiny toys that we can live without. You know, it's remediation for um kids that are falling behind or kids that are underrepresented. It's free meals for kids, it's all, it's some special ed funding grants to help with that, it's, it's isn't like. Things that we could help humbly to absorb and live without, these things are all. Things that help prop kids up. Um, so this is all for transportation, the raw料就是in transportation, um underfunded in transportation by about. Three hundred thousand dollars, child nutrition is underfunded. Um. The reimbursement rates don't match what it actually costs to make meals. Um, and then a slide about property tax, little bond history, our Granite Falls High School bond was almost twenty-two million dollars. And it got paid off in December. We have half of the steam bond getting paid off in December of twenty twenty-six, or a third of the steam bond. The rest doesn't get paid off till twenty thirty-six, and the high school turf and track gets paid off in uh June twenty thirty-three. But um, look, we have the operations levy right now is five million dollars a year, that's. Uh, that's we taxed to to uh raise money for voted on. Probably that uh kind of projects voted on levy. Debt services is um money that we are able to raise to pay off our voted on bonds, and that. The operations levy and the capital projects levy remain flat per calendar year twenty twenty-six, but the debt services levy. The bulk of it falls off because the bulk of it was going to pay for the Granite Falls High School bond, which we happily paid off. So it results in an overall reduction of forty-one percent to uh for Granite Falls taxpayers. Um, it's a reminder of how difficult it is to pass a bond in Washington with a sixty percent threshold and um. Maybe starting off, starting the conversation of, can we do some of the medium-sized projects that are needed here? Using a higher, a more significant capital projects levy while still reducing the overall tax rate for Granite Falls residents. Um, you know, there, there's, the overall tax bill is going down by four million dollars for the Granite Falls residents. And can some of that go to help, um instead of asking for a bond, to increase our capital projects levy, to do some of these medium-sized projects that. We can't pay for using our existing levy and can't pay for using state funds, it's, they're just, they're too paid for that, but. Maybe don't require a bond. Um, and that's it, if we want to have, try to save the ten minutes for questions or. Or go back to other slide, to slides or. Any questions?
So with the decline in enrollment that you're budgeting, is that changing um any staff or anything along those lines? Or essentially keeping the staff that we're adding up?
We worked through a provision that we are not replacing. There is some shifting of enrollment that we've had to shift kind of where staff are. Um, we did do a, we did do some. Um, non-renewals.
Yes, with some provisional enclosures that we non, that we non-renewed, um, we also did handle one reduction. Um, that that held, um, and so that was a one point oh, and then we haven't reduced on the classified side at all. Um, that's the, the, the final piece for us to to really look at and see if there's anything needed there.
We do, I mean, we spend a lot of time comparing ourselves to neighboring districts, and I know that most neighboring districts have. More money to work with than we do, but we are staff pretty lean, our class sizes are still, we, we've done a lot of work to try and. Right-size our class sizes a little bit, they're still lower than most districts around us, and I think that's. A bragging point that we can grow our fund balance and still have our class sizes lower than most of our surrounding districts. Um. Not a lot of, not a lot of low-hanging fruit anymore, though, we've, we've pretty much captured all the low and medium hang, hanging fruit. If we, if we got to a point where the state was cutting budget and federal funds dried up. Those would be some painful conversations.
So I guess I just want to make it clear, we're not, obviously, we're not cutting anymore, are we hiring any?
We do have some open positions, but those, those are primarily due to um. Staff going elsewhere or if I having opportunities elsewhere and having to replace them.
Yeah. Um, what is our, and I, obviously, this is all based upon a crystal ball, right? And so I think I saw like a hundred and thirty-five kindergartners or something, and let's just say a hundred and sixty-five show up, which happens more often than I care to remember. So now we're trying to hire a teacher in June or July. Have we, do we have, are we working to like creating like a hiring pool or doing a better job so that we're not, right? The vast majority of teachers by that point are already hired, right, so we're, we're begging. Are we doing anything to help make that uncomfortable situation better by maybe going out and talking to people now? And or trying to get them in the pool or or something?
We have, we have one existing staff member that is a little bit on the extra staff member side that would help us absorb one classroom. We're working on um designating two potential classrooms for um for kindergarten that wasn't designated before, just in case. We would need to start a candidate pool and, you know, pre-screen some candidates so we can jump quickly if that does. We're, we're tracking, I'm, I'm, I'm tracking enrollment daily, I'm going to report out cabinet probably twice a week on it. To see how those kindergartners materialize.
It's, it's daily.
Yeah.
Marshall gets a question every day from me. How many kindergartners do we have today, Marshall? It's like every day.
I guess question, I mean, I've got a couple of teachers in my family, and so basically what they've, I guess districts do pools, right? And so they, they've, they've been, you know, if we have availability of the, in these five districts, right? We're going to give you a call, so essentially they're just waiting for someone to call and say, hey, we want to, you know, you have an opportunity. Are we doing that, like deeply, like interviewing people now and putting them in a pool so that?
So um we have a few uh leave needs this fall for taking the in first term years. So we've been interviewing with Redora, and we have been looking at those applicants in a way of. Could they, could they fill a long-term, and we can't offer them anything yet, but we are interviewing people for those positions. They are hiring the short-term need for those leaves, but also keeping an eye out for great people. We are getting a lot of applicants for open positions, so we've been screening them and really picking the best. In those uh for our screening process to have them interview.
Okay.
I think if our demographic report is even. Eighty percent accurate, we're going to be one of those rare districts that is growing significantly over the next five to seven years. And, you know, we're going to have those other kinds of problems where, so we have space, how do we? Make classrooms available, or how do we find enough quality teachers, you know, I think that's going to be, it's not a bad problem to have, but it's a different problem than we're used to having.
Okay.
Now, for me, this is a good news report, and I appreciate all the work that the administration has done. You know, show us how well the district is managing, tell you that our fund balance is actually is raising. Um, listening to the news lately over the last four weeks, as school districts are reporting to their boards um deficits that they weren't anticipating. I just heard one reasonably just south of us with a twelve million dollar deficit. So this is good news reporting, and um, again, I really do appreciate what we're doing. Um, I know there's more to come. I know that we, you know, the, I said, I'll, I keep plugging this, but um. Doing some different configurations for their elementary schools, I think, is, is, there are, there is money savings there. I think we identified that there's money in transportation savings there right away, there are ways of, 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 that, to me. And I'm, I'm, you know, I sit up here once a month or or so, twice a month. Um, it's pretty easy for me to say that uh. Reconfiguring the elementary schools to me is a low-hanging fruit, so it's still there. And I think there's, there's quite a bit of money savings in that, so. But I do, again, going back to, I appreciate what we've got here. This is, we, we've been doing some really strong work, I think I'm three, three years on the board now. And uh I can recall that one point five percent fund balance. And the idea that the next year wasn't going to be so good, and the emotions of the board. Um, and, and, you know. With, with regard to what was going on, I could see why the board members were very emotional about the fun, our, our, our expenditures. Continually going up with our, our income not, and I, I just love the trend here, we were doing the right things, so thank you.
Well said, Director. Okay, and I will just bang the drum for a second time to of, I mean. It's no different from your, your home, right? If you would, if you were banking on, you know, a Christmas bonus each year to cover X, Y, or Z within your household. And all of a sudden that debt will show up, right, that's the federal funding right now, right? We don't know if we're getting that Christmas bonus. And if we didn't last year, we'd be in the hole right now, and so I unders, again, I understand a lot of money, but. Districts cost a lot of money to run. Um, so I, I will cross my fingers on the federal side of the house and uh. And we will, we will see where that all goes, but really appreciate you putting this together for us.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Good.
Good. Uh, and we will, oh wait. We do have, scratch that, two C, uh, is there any public comment on this session? No, okay, well then we will close the special meeting here at five fifty-five, we will return at six o'clock for the regular board meeting.
Okay, it is six o'clock. Welcome to the uh July twenty-third regular board meeting. Um, we will begin here with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Over to Superintendent Eastland for the land acknowledgements.
Perfect. All right, we honor the first peoples of these lands by acknowledging that the area in which we gather is within the traditional territory of the Stillagomish tribe of Indians. The Stillagomish people have inhabited these lands and waters since time immemorial, and their descendants have remained in this territory to this day. The Stillagomish people have continued to practice the traditional ways of their ancestors of fishing, hunting, and gathering. The Stillagomish, the Stillagomish tribe has had these lands and cultural traditions passed on to them by their ancestors who believed that everything has a spirit and they are the caretakers of these lands and waters.
Thank you. And then tonight in attendance, we have Director Dane, Director Carey, myself, Director Ladue, Superintendent Gieslin. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we uh excuse Director Kincaid and Director Gawner tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second, all in favor? Okay, uh, now to four A, board comments. We'll start down with you, Director Dane.
Um, I just hope that everybody's enjoying in their summer and um preparing to um come back to a, an exciting school year we have coming up. Yeah, it's all about enjoy the summer right now. Enjoy your time away.
Right, Carey?
Um, uh, I, uh, well, I guess let me start with the legislative side of things. So obviously um, you, they're not in session right now. There's still a lot of conversation about things that um are potentially going to be um supported by WASTA uh on behalf of school districts starting um next session. Um, really no need to get into the super details of that, but um uh, there's still a lot of push, there's still a lot of areas of school funding related to Washington State schools that are, that still haven't been fixed and still need some attention. Transportation being one of them, um, still the rising costs of, of insurance and, and operating costs and stuff like that. So um, thank you to our legislators here in the thirty ninth for all the work they've done and a plug for them to continue pushing that ball forward. So there's, there's my legislative update. Um, uh, second, just personal, I uh, I, I, I love this time of year in this community. There's nothing I love more. I, I drive across the South Fork of the Stilly to get home. And looking down and it's seventy-eight degrees and you see a hundred people swimming in the river, right? And the river's gotta be fifty something degrees or something like that, but that is summertime for us. And I, I see neighbors walking around that I haven't seen in a long time. I, I see kids walking around that I've, that I've never met. It's, it's a really cool time. It's, it's some of my favorite time to live in this community and helps me remember um some of the things I love most about it. Um, uh, I, I've had a lot of conversations with, you know, various people in our community um related to, you know, the growth, the growth, the growth, that we're gonna lose the heart of what this community is. And I find that interesting because I guess I would define the things that I love about Granite Falls would likely be very different than the things that you, Director Ladue, love and Director Dane, who's been here his whole life, that you love. But there's all facets of it, and, and one of the things that I say commonly is that, you know, growth is a good thing. And as Granite gets bigger, um, things continue to get better for everybody. Um, and that, you know, we as a school district are making our, uh, doing our due diligence to make sure that we plan for it. Our leaders in, in City Hall are gonna make sure they, they plan for it. But I, I, I don't share the trepidation. I, I have a supreme excitement about kind of what's on the, on the, um, what's, what is coming for us as a community. Um, and, you know, one day driving across the South Fork of Stilly and seeing two hundred people down there enjoying it and stuff like that. So um, I just wanted to encourage everyone to, you know, uh, enjoy this time of year and to, you know, move forward, to operate from a place of, of, um, of happiness rather than a place of fear, which is kind of always the way I've lived my life. So there, there's my little plug there.
Right, appreciated. Um, I'll start off with, I think I maybe mentioned this last time, but it's always a summertime uh reminder of, uh, summer's fun, everybody have fun. Try your best to not let everything that you learn through the year slip across these two months uh that you're not in the classroom. Um, you know, find joy in reading and, you know, iPads have many wonderful apps and stuff now to make math fun and all that good stuff. Um, helps everybody start off on the right foot. Um, another thing that I always plug is just the uh, the willingness to sit down and have a discussion. Uh, you know, again, email is on uh the, the school's website. It's P L E V O E X at G falls dot webnet dot E D U. You know, happy to, happy to meet up and, cause I know there's always, within the district, there's always lots of questions of what's going on. Um, and, and I love to hear any feedback too. Um, so would always welcome that. And uh kind of tying on to Carl's point about, you know, what you love about Granite. Man, I love Granite and there has been, you know, sometimes you have to leave to understand what you have and to not take things for granted. Um, Dana will probably laugh because uh we had a, a meeting last week. It was supposed to be in person, but it had to be on the phone because I had to end up going to New York for work. And man, nothing makes you wanna be at Granite more than being in New York City. In July, it was hot, it was humid. Anybody that's been there knows that New York has a unique smell. It's, man, you get here and just it's fresh, clean, mountain air. That Saturday I went out for a hike uh up on Perry Creek Trail. Um, it's just, it's the reason why I'm out here. It's the reason why um it is far away from the hustle and bustle that you possibly can. And there's no place more hustly or bustling than New York City. Um, we, I think myself and the greater population of Europe have a grossly different definition of what the city of opportunity is. Um, but anyway, so all that to say is I absolutely, I cherish, you know, being within this community. Um, and, you know, it's just reminders like that, that, you know, it's home, right, and to come back here, so. Um, yeah, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Um, okay, moving on to five A, the superintendent report presented by Dana Gieslin.
All right. Thank you, Corey. All right, first of all, I'd like to announce that Brandon Mueller is our new ALE manager and he comes to us with a wealth of experience. Um, a large multilingual background, which is really exciting as we talked, um, we had a meeting prior to this and talked about our demographic report. And um really excited to have him and all the experience that he brings. He's been um an educator for over twenty-five years, um, was most recently in Marysville, large work in MTSS and ALE programs. Um, but his doctoral focus is on restorative practices. And we got, we had a nice conversation around some of his work around, around that and what he's found um to be true and not true and what works and all of those things. And so really excited to have him join us on August first. Uh, summer, oops, I think I'm not too. Yes, all right. Um, some, just some updates. Um, of course, you know, when, when we're out for the summer, we take care of some of the big, the big jobs around the district. And so thank you to our custodial team, which works as a team and goes building to building over the summer. And our maintenance team and our facilities team and Marshall, who um tries to keep everybody in line. So some of the things that are happening right now, the deep cleaning, our deep shampooing of all the carpets, the floor maintenance, the stripping and waxing, as you can see in the floor out here, it looks gorgeous. Um, as long as we don't step in it, that might have happened last week. Um, with gym floors stripped and resurfaced and, and those kind of things, they look great. Uh, fire systems are being tested. They were actually out today. They'll be out a few times in the next few weeks. Um, interior painting, um, just touching up and, and, and really making things look clean. I know we, we painted here, the district office that hadn't been painted in maybe twenty-five years or so. So that was last summer and, you know, we're, we're doing some big painting down in uh Crossroads and some other places. Uh, just, you know, it's a lot of wear and tear and a lot of bodies going through, so we want to make sure that we can take care of that a little bit. I talked about this before, I believe, LED lighting on all the outside um light fixtures. Um, some plumbing repairs, the water stations and stadium plumbing. I know we had an issue at graduation where we didn't have water, um faucets and water filling stations working, so those are being repaired. That big project that the board approved, thank you for this, um, the siding repairs at Granite Falls High School. Um, if you do stop by, I was there just yesterday, kind of looking at all the work. And it's been replaced and so the next thing is, you know, the, like Marshall called it, kind of the tedious work of the painting of the poles and the painting and, and the pressure washing and those kind of things, but it looks really nice. We had a lot of just pieces chipping off and brittle from that water retention that was in there. The playground repairs um at Mountain Way and Principal uh De La Cruz is here, so I know she's probably glad to get that wrapped up. Um, it should be done by next week and then some pest control um also at Mountain Way. Um, it will be closed this weekend, um, so we encourage everyone, there'll be signage and things, but no one on there. Want to be really clear that the yellow jackets, the ground yellow jackets are not helpful. They're not a helpful insect. They are a non-pollinator. And so if we were concerned that maybe something's not going to get pollinated by helping them move to a different location, that's not the case. We just want them not to be where our children are.
Actually, yellow jackets are um harmful to pollinating honeybees and stuff.
That too, Director Carey, they are, they're
More, you know.
They're not helpful, right? All in all, yes. Um, a couple of things on the kitchens at uh Granite Falls Middle School and Granite Falls High School. We talked about this a little bit, but there was some industrial grave, grade stoves and ovens. Um, many thousands of dollars worth, worth purchased six or seven years ago. They were located and we are installing them in our two culinary kitchens, so we're super excited about that. We also had Granite Falls High School, um, the, the kitchen, the culinary kitchen there um really, really had um some lack of cleaning and um things. And a huge thank you to our custodial crew. We have spent um lots of extra hours, had to do some, some deep cleaning um so that it can be ready for student use uh in the next, in the fall. And um Colleen Mace will be between those two schools and she is very organized and does a very nice job. So excited to have her in those two spaces managing that. But again, a huge thank you to our custodial maintenance and facilities teams. They, they work really hard over the summer um to get our schools, you know, bright and shiny and ready to go for our kids. And the, oops, one, sorry, my, my screen's on a different one. Um, so there'll be a little campaign and I haven't even talked to Paris about this, but it's gonna be great. In August, we're going to do um a social media outreach, just a did you know, some things about our district, like how many meals we provide over the course of a year and how many miles, I know our buses drive safely and get kids, you know, to and from and to sporting events and those kind of things. How many student athletes, you know, get to engage in those extracurricular activities? The research is very clear on extracurriculars. And, you know, our sports, that Granite Falls High School are open to all of the students that are at Crossroads too. So it just is, it's, it's a, it's a compilation of, of all, both schools and, and all kids can participate in those. Um, all the different sporting teams and our newest addition, of course, we've talked about it before, the boys golf program, program. And just the huge outpouring from the community to really fund that whole thing um in kind and with lots of donations. So lots of, lots of kids were interested. They had the meeting and I think there was eighteen athletes at that meeting, Mr. Bankini said, with three saying, oh my gosh, I can't make it, but I'll be there in the fall. So anytime you have that much interest, you wanna offer that for kids to keep them engaged. Um, you know, and then talking about the did you know on our, our Tiger Cabinet that we launched this year, representing our students in grades three through twelve and giving them a voice and that engagement that they had with our um, our politicians that came out and visited um our CTE offerings. You get the idea, but through the month of August, we'll just kind of do some outreach. We're gonna, we're going to be running a levy. We want people to know all the wonderful things that are happening in the system and um how many people are working really, really hard to meet the needs of, of our students and families. And then coming up, we have a number of things coming up. You know, we're working on the website. Um, that's still, that's still happening. Our director, our supervisor of transportation is currently serving on a federal jury in Seattle, so he'll be out for a few days, hopefully not very many. Um, and then we have a school board work session on Friday um from nine to three. That'll be right here at the district office. Um, Show and Shine is August second, and that is a really cool event downtown. I went to that last year. Um, the National Night Out is coming up on August fifth. I'm hearing rumors of a helicopter landing and taking off. Um, Fall Sports, if we have some interest in those, please check out your school's website and get that physical scheduled and all those things so you can be ready to go. Um, our Back to School Fair is August nineteenth, four to six. I don't have the location up there. It is at Mountain Way again, correct? Yes. Um, and then New Cert Orientation, those are the dates. If the board would like to stop by, we would love to have you. We're going to do it here in the boardroom. Uh, we don't have a huge number of new certificate of staff and it's also air conditioned here in the boardroom. Uh, School of Rock, August twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Um, please stop by, especially the first day. We'll have kind of our, our opening that day. Um, and then our first day of school tentatively pending our GFBA um negotiations and that contract ratification is September third. And that is all I have for you tonight.
Do we, um, I know when we had talked with the Community Health Center uh stuff a little while back, do we know if this year we would be able to take advantage of like the mobile unit for like physicals or anything like that?
We did talk to Zoe about that when she was here. I'll reach out to her and see um if we can get them to that or another event of sorts, um, because she did offer that and that would be amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll touch base with her.
Any other question? I actually thought I was gonna ask the same question. Okay. Perfect.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to five B, business report prepared by Marshall.
And I wasn't gonna present on tonight. We're on track for color stuff we've been talking about. Um, we're negative, we'll be negative for May and June. We'll get back to positive July and be two point something million dollars in August, uh positive fund balance. We did a, out of the kind of smart heart, we loaned the states money in June so they could uh meet their year-end requirements. So, you know, we love doing that, helping out our neighbors to the south. Um, we loaned them about three hundred thousand dollars, so we have plenty of that alone, so it um, this tends to happen sometimes in uh, in June when the state's ending their fiscal year and wants to show a nice fund balance to the state. We get shorted deportment sometimes in June. They, they always make it up in July and August and we're gonna get it paid up in July, so.
With interest, right? We get it with interest?
Actually, they, they, we decided not to ask for any interest.
Wow.
But never went, wow.
So nice.
We give and we give and we
That's small town.
No.
Goodness.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So um lots of stuff going on this summer with like a serial staff like Dana um or, and we don't have, you know, we have, for the bulk of the summer, we have five custodians working, two maintenance guys, two grounds guys, and they accomplish a ton of stuff in the summer. And it's really, I mean, they all like to work hard. They all enjoy the quiet time to catch up on stuff in the summer and they, they work in teams and they just knock things out. It's pretty cool.
Good day.
Any questions or comments on the business report?
Oh.
Okay. We will move to item six A, items from the floor. Are there any? No, okay. Uh, seven A, unfinished business. We have none. So then we'll move to new business. Um, Wall School District twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
I make a motion that we approve the Grand Falls School District twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Now eight B, the first reading to amend twenty-two thirty, transition to kindergarten.
I move, sorry, I move that we approve the first reading to amend twenty-two thirty transition to kindergarten.
Well, second, motion's been made in second, all in favor?
Right.
Okay, eight C, first reading to amend five zero one one sexual harassment of district staff prohibited.
I move that we accept the first reading to amend fifty eleven sexual harassment of district staff prohibited.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all in favor?
Right.
Uh, eight D, first reading to amend six eight zero one capital assets theft sensitive assets.
I move that we accept the first reading to amend sixty-eight oh one capital assets theft sensitive assets.
Well, second, motion's been made in second, all in favor?
Right.
Uh, eight E, first reading to adopt five zero one two parental family or marital status and pregnancy or related conditions of staff.
I move that we accept the first reading to adopt fifty twelve parental family or marital status and pregnancy or related conditions of staff.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all in favor?
Right.
Right. Eight F, first reading to adopt three two zero six pregnant and parenting students.
I move that we accept the first reading to adopt thirty-two oh six pregnant and parenting students.
All second, motion's been made in second, all in favor?
Right.
Okay, now uh, moving to the consent agenda, any additions that aren't on here? No. All right. Uh, any discussion?
No.
No. Yeah, so consent agenda passes with unanimous consent. And it is six twenty and we are adjourning. Thank you very much.